So everyone can see them.
Right.
Well, they're out of the script. Well, I see. I will see.
I'm checking to see if everybody can hear me. We're going to start the meeting here shortly. We're trying to get Wayne signed in.
Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. I need a call on maybe board meeting to order. Before I do, I just want to make sure that I state that we are still under the governor's executive order number sixteen. We're practicing social distancing. We're meeting virtually. Our meeting will be streamed and recorded so the public can actually see and hear our meeting. I would have to also add that the governor's executive order has been extended to June thirty. So our meeting next month will be virtually awesome. With that, another call for a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Kevin? Kevin Adam Sander?
I'm here.
Wayne Arnold?
I'm here.
Doris Black?
President.
Jim Campbell?
Here.
Carol Carter, Estes Wright? Carol?
On mute.
I can see you. I'm here too. Oh, she's, she is here. We're getting some help. Janice Hampton?
President.
A.J. Massey?
I'm here.
Shannon Stewart?
It says I'm on mute.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. I can hear you, Carol. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of, um, council agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman? Yes, sir.
I, I would like to remove, uh, budget amendment number five from the education capital to, uh, item, uh, number five A on the agenda so we can discuss that amendment of the amendment.
Did everyone hear Kevin's motion? Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, we've got a second. All in favor? Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol? Carol? He's still getting assistance.
Yeah.
Okay, Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of our, um, agenda.
Some move?
Got a motion and a second? Y'all, everyone here in the motion need a second on the approval of the motion. Got a motion and a second? Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol? Carol Carter? Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Give me just a second.
Hey, did you hear me?
Who's that? Carol, I need, did you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, say the motion is approved. Uh, next on the agenda, our financial reports. Uh, we covered those in our work session. I don't think there's been any updates that we can cover in our meeting, uh, tonight with Holly and our Mousie County Financial Director, Karen Bill. We have a meeting scheduled next week and of course there's been meetings this week concerning, um, budget and the, uh, uh, financial reports. So we will, uh, unless someone has any questions, we'll go move to our action items. Okay? Now, under our action items, our first item is resolution, submurdies, uh, suspension and board policies. Dr. Williams covered those in our work session, um, which dealt with policies, um, four, six, zero, zero, grading system, policy four point six oh five, that dealt with reservation requirements, uh, policy four point seven zero, zero, testing programs, policy five point one oh nine, evaluation, policy five point eight oh two, qualifications and duties of the director of schools, and policy six point two zero, zero, that dealt with attendance. Any questions about that, um, approval of, uh, that resolution? If not, can I get a motion?
Some move. Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second? Thank you. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol? I can hear you. You guys may not have heard of, I can hear. Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, second action item is, um, FY twenty consolidation application approval for idea, that's a school year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, if you remember, Ruth Carson covered that information for us. Does anyone have any questions about, uh, approving that consolidation account, application? If not, can I get a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, next action item is tenure teachers and your board, uh, and attachments. There's a list of, uh, tenure teachers, uh, that's been presented to the board to approve for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. If anyone have a question about the, uh, names on the list? No questions? Can I get a motion?
Some move. Some move. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, of course, is, uh, FY twenty twenty-one budget. We know that, uh, we, uh, can't get to the point where we can vote on it yet. There's still discussions and with the, uh, uh, latest information we received last week concerning some of the, Holly's zones that, she's, Holly, you on now?
I'm on.
You want to make any comments about the, uh, budget?
Well.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, everyone knew that we would not be voted on, uh, tonight.
Okay. I did prepare, uh, an analysis, um, with the proposed cuts from the county. I'm not sure if you guys received that. I sent it late to Janet. Did you get that?
Yes, and I'd like to thank you because it did, uh, clarify some things for me or it made it plain.
Okay. Very good. I'd like to go through it if, if I can have a few minutes.
Okay.
Certainly.
Okay. All right. On the report I prepared, you can see the revenue projections for fiscal year twenty have been adjusted down from the previous projection of one hundred and three million one hundred and eleven dollars to ninety-six million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars due to the local tax shortfall of approximately six million and sixty-five thousand dollars when considering a one point five million dollar transfer from local purpose tax at year end. This is ending fund balance at approximately seven point six million dollars. Moving into next year, the, the revenue is projected with an overall cut from the county ten million two hundred forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars to local tax, which includes an adjustment to local funding for loss of students, putting budgeted revenues in this scenario at ninety-three million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The expenditures on this report for fiscal year twenty-one, the last column, reflect the estimated expenditures that were projected for this year at year end as of the end of February prior to the national crisis, which is the one hundred four million six hundred fifty-eight thousand. As you can see, the fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one in this scenario would come in at a negative three point eight million dollars. So if you take that three point eight million dollars, which is ninety, considering the expenditures at ninety-six point seven percent, take that negative fund balance and then adjust it back up to one hundred percent because when we budget, we, we can't budget at exactly what we're going to spend. And so you adjust back an amount to the one hundred percent, which is another three point five million dollars. And then you also have to consider an allowance for the three percent fund balance that's required by the state in order to get your budget passed. So you're looking at a total, uh, approximate total cut of ten point five million dollars just from if we looked at where we would have spent this year. So we're backing up ten point five million dollars. Um, I'd, I'd like to add that during today's budget hearing at, at the county, it was suggested that we try to turn in our rebots budget to include these cuts within a week and a half, which is unbelievable. And, um, we did, um, discuss this with them and were able to get it pushed back to June first. The county has no plans for a continuation budget. They're looking for us to turn in a budget by June first. When asked about the shortfall to maintenance of effort and how it could be justified, we were just told that you can't get blood out of the turnip. So, um, I'd like to remind everyone that the MOE funding law has not changed. The county is still currently held to funding us at the same level of funding as the prior year. Since our budget is due June first, prior to any possible legislative actions, my opinion is that we turn a proposed budget, um, to include full maintenance of effort funding for this year and next. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim?
I, I, I guess a couple of, a couple of questions. For Holly, I summarize what we just received. If we take this year's budget, the year we're in right now, and freeze all expenditures, and, and as we look to next year, FY twenty-one, if we say no raises, no bonuses, no added positions, nothing changes, we still have to cut ten and a half million dollars out of this year's budget in, in order to meet this minimal standard for a three percent fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes. That's right.
I, I, I would just, I've been watching this closely for eight years. This is the most extraordinary challenge, I believe, I've ever seen. And I'm not, I'm not at all sure how we even go about doing that. Uh, but that, that, that's just an incredible undertaking. And I think if this is what we're supposed to do, I think this whole board needs to be prepared for a very, very painful exercise. I, I'm not, that's going to be a painful exercise to go through to take ten and a half million dollars out of our budget this year. Now, have I overstated anything, Holly?
No, sir. It, it's going to be very painful and it already has been this week, just in the consideration of moving towards this.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I can, I would, I would like to ask one more question.
Sure.
So Holly, maintenance of effort is essentially a budget. So by June first, are, are we to prepare a budget that reflects we've been funded at maintenance of effort, but our expenditures reflect these cuts that we've been tasked with doing? Is that, is that what our budget will look like?
It's possible.
And I know that there's a, I know that they're anticipating something in Nashville in June that may give relief to maintenance of effort, but to your point earlier, our budget is due the first of June. And I'm, I'm unclear what we're supposed to reflect as far as revenues and what we're supposed to reflect as far as expenditures.
Right. We're, we're going to have to meet and decide how we want to move forward with our budget, whether it be, um, reduce the funding based on the, the number the county gave us, present the budget at the current level required by law, which is maintenance of effort. Um, and then you've got that revenue side, the expenditure side. Again, do you look at where you would like to be if the MOE came in, or do you go ahead and reduce that by the ten point five million dollars in hopes that it doesn't come to fruition?
Jim, let me, uh, jump in. One of the things that, um, uh, we've discussed and I've discussed with, um, our superintendent Holly and Dale, we, uh, planning a series of meetings and I will meet with Holly and Ray Tuesday. Uh, in addition to that, I think the budget committee needs to meet next week also to include Dale and some things that we need to discuss concerning the, uh, proposed legislative meeting in June, June first and some of the requirements. So I think, uh, to be clear, I think we need, uh, Dale and maybe some additional help on, uh, clearing up, uh, what we actually are supposed to do by law, uh, versus what the county is asking us to do. So I think, um, it's going to take some sit-down meetings, uh, to get through this and, um, that's, that's the position I've, I've taken, um, before we, uh, start, um, stripping our budget. Any other questions for Holly?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a question for Holly, but I, I just wanted you to hear from me that I'm in full support of you and Holly and maybe Jim and the, and the rest of the budget committee sitting down with Attorney Thomas to see, because I want to make sure that when we present a budget, we're presenting the budget that we are legally required to present. Because if the county commission is asking us to do something outside the scope of what we're supposed to do, just so they don't have to do what they're supposed to do, I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of the nine of us doing the jobs that we were tasked to do. Um, and that's where the nine of us need to depend on you, Chairman Johnson, and your leadership and working with Holly and, um, you know, you know, Jim, maybe you and the budget committee need to, you know, sit down and, you know, figure it out. But I, like, I just feel like that they can't ask us to do something that we cannot do legally. I mean, I don't know. May, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, Holly, but, you know, I understand that you can't get blood out of a turnip, but we also have thirteen thousand students that we have to educate next year, no matter what their budget looks like, um, because we're tasked with a job. Um, and I know that there are county, um, people who are looking at their budgets as well, but that's just where we are. I mean, I think if we talk to any school system across the state, they're doing the same things we are. And so Chairman Johnson, I'm very much in favor of that. Um, because I think, and like Jim even said earlier, like, we, we have a lot of work to do and it's going to be very painful for everyone, not just us, but I think for the county commission as well. So that wasn't a question for Holly, but that was just, uh, I felt like you needed to hear from me that, that, yes, we need to do that. Um, you know, and I understand we can't get blood out of a turnip, but we may have to squeeze it really hard, see if we can get something.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I certainly agree with that, that we need to just take time, look at every angle that we can because the children should be first in line as to what we're, you know, because we do have to educate them. And so I, I, as a member of the budget committee, I'm willing to sit down and, and take however long it, it takes in order to see where we are and see what we can come, uh, conclude as, at this juncture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Any other comments, questions for Holly? Okay. Now, next on the agenda is, uh, construction management contract. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, um, Kevin?
I, I, I've been thinking about this construction manager's contract ever since Monday night. And, and Karen Bell made the comment that the county commission does not plan on funding anything uh, new, or new capital expenses until twenty twenty-two. And the more I thought about this, I thought, and I know Dale and Ray and everybody's worked hard on this contract and I appreciate that. And, and we need a new Pope, we need a K eight at Pope, we need that school. Uh, but I, I'm just not sure I'm ready to vote. And I'm the one that made the motion out of the budget committee for, to recommend this, for us to vote on it. But being that things have changed since then with what Karen Bell said Monday night, I, I would like to make the motion to postpone voting on this, uh, construction manager contract until July, uh, when we have a little bit more information and we know more about what's going on. And I would just like to make that motion to postpone and vote on this contract, uh, construction contract, contract for construction manager, uh, till Ju, the July, uh, board meeting.
Okay. So you've got a motion to second in this discussion?
Yeah, um, for me, the fact of waiting to July, we have not pinned ourselves in it to anything financially with this contract. We laid it out where if we vote on it, we only act ba, based on phases. And when we do have money, uh, we have a year until if we may be funded. And during that year's time, we can move forward with the design and programming so that if we are funded, we'll be ready to execute at that time. That was the purpose of doing this contract the way we did it. We already have the architect contract in place and we were just making the construction contract match what we've done with the architect contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, AJ?
AJ, yeah, um, just, uh, I, I understand where you're coming from, Kevin, but I also would like to make a point that, um, although Ms. Karen is very skilled and is an excellent, is excellent at their job, that's not her call, uh, on what the, what the county's going to do and what they plan on doing. Uh, they haven't stated that to my knowledge, at least they haven't voted on that to my knowledge. So I think we continue with what we knew last, and what we knew last is that Pope was moving forward. And especially with an added bonus of, of clarification from Fisher Washington that, uh, that we can take this in phases. That's, that's not Karen Bell's call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This Wayne?
Okay, go, go ahead.
Uh, did I understand that that was a recommendation out of the budget committee? Is that what Kevin said?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. This comes with a recommendation from the budget committee. Okay, so that, that comes out, requires no second. That, that comes as a motion without a second.
Now, we'll, we have, we have another motion on, on the floor. You understand?
No, no, you, uh, the, the motion.
No, we actually, actually.
Go ahead, Chad.
Go ahead, Wayne. Well, I was going to say Wayne is, Wayne is correct. Um, it was a recommendation from the budget committee and so we have to vote on it. And Kevin, I get what you're saying and, and AJ, me too, like, um, and I asked a question the other night to Attorney Thomas, if we vote on this, you know, construction manager contract, does that financially obligate us? And it does not financially obligate us. It's just the next step. And that's us doing our jobs. And like AJ said, we got to do our jobs. And then now the ball's in the county's court, whether they're going to fund it or not. And so, um.
And also, uh, if we, if we back off at this point, that doesn't really send a positive message to the commission that we're, we're willing to back off at this point.
Exactly.
Once again, I think we go with the last thing, I think we go with the last thing we knew, which was that we're moving forward. We need to adjust that. By all means, we'll adjust that. But right now, we need to move forward with the information we have.
And, and I'm of the opinion that we do our jobs and they allow us to do our jobs. And then we allow them to do their job, which if they choose not to build a Pope, that's on them. And, you know, we, we've, we've checked all the boxes we're supposed to check. We chose the property, we chose the architect, we've chosen the construction manager. We've done all that we can do. And so now it's their turn. And so if they don't want to build it, that's on them. They're all up for reelection in twenty twenty-two.
And, and no doubt they'll, they'll probably get reelected. But I am for putting a, a hold on this and let us give some more thought. And I understand, I understand what you're saying. We agreed to do this, we agreed to do that. But by the same token, I'm trying to get my head around where is the money? Uh, where is the guarantee? I hear you say that they don't have to build, uh, the school if they decide not to. So I, I'm, I'm not very comfortable at all with that. So, uh, I'm in favor of just slowing it down and, uh, moving, moving, uh, you know, so that we won't make any mistake. We do need the school. I agree with that. But I, I hear you saying, I hear, I hear them saying we're going to cut so much money on the one hand and, and, uh, we need to be putting whatever funds we have and can get into educating children. Uh, that, that's what we need to guarantee at this juncture.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Jim?
Yeah. I would just like to urge this board to move forward with this. Uh, Ray and Dale have done, I think, a tremendous job of coordinating, uh, this CM contract with the architect's contract. It's, it's, the design is, is anticipated to be done in increments as, as funds are available. This obligates us to spend no money until funds are available in small increments. And I would hate to see all of this work, uh, go for naught. It, it, Dale and Ray have done a great job of, of coordinating the architect working with the construction manager during design. Make sure we get real-time budgeting, real-time constructability things. It's all set and I would just urge us to move forward. Uh, it, again, it does not obligate us to spend a penny until funds are available.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Janice?
Okay, here is where I am with this, okay? Thank you, Jim, for clarifying what you stated at the last stand. You know, I am all for a new school being built out in the area for a new Pope. And I don't think there's any other board member that's against it. But here's my thought at this present time. And when I say this, if someone can help share some clarity as to, uh, whether, um, uh, it would overshadow anything presently to what we're going forth with at this time, then please do so. But as it stands right now, our district is in a state of emergency when it comes to our budget. Our budget, it covers every aspect of our district. Due to this coronavirus, we have no general idea what our schools will look like this twenty twenty-one school year. We have no indication at this point whether we will have students in the classroom or whether we will be doing virtual classrooms. Um, I think Pete, you stated that the governor has stated until June the thirtieth, it has still been lifted with what we're doing right now. And, um, to take on any additional project will not be feasible, you know, at this time, not a less. We can hold off of it until after June the thirtieth. That way we'll see how some indication of what, you know, it will look like. Because of the fact that we may have to do virtual classrooms, that's going to come with a price. And I don't know where this money is going to be coming from because right now we're taking from one department and putting it to another department. And, um, you know, I don't even know for sure where we at, at this time, uh, budget-wise. But I would say this, this virtual classroom will come with a price because not all students have, uh, iPads or laptops, you know, in order to do their curriculum, to finish their curriculum, nor do they have internet services. So some way or somehow, education is first, focusing upon the children. And I know we need, and, and I say this, our whole school system either needs new schools, you know, expanding some or improvement. And I'm all for that. But right now, I would hate to see any monies overshadow, um, anything that we're not very, um, aware with, you know, and that is how our classrooms are going to look if we have classrooms. You know, if not, we're going to have to figure out something and that's going to come with a price. So I guess the question I'm asking at this time, will it overshadow what we're trying to do? Uh, since this coronavirus is still in place? Will it take away monies, uh, from the classrooms or for virtual studies? Or however, we're going to have to move in this twenty twenty-one school year?
No, this does not impact anything operationally. Uh, capital budgets, dollars are budgeted separately from operational dollars. So if the county commission does fund us in FY twenty-two, it has no impact on what we do operational this year or even next year. It's two separate pots of money, uh, that don't actually cross paths.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Jim?
If, if I can add, again, this does not obligate us to spend a penny. Uh, and so we've got, once we execute this, we've still got ample time to see what things, how things shake out over the next year even. What's at risk if we don't sign it is we, we risk losing all the time and money and effort that has gone into putting these two contracts really together, both the architect and the CM. And so if we, I, I say nothing to lose by going ahead and executing this. A lot to lose potentially if we don't go ahead and execute it.
So are you saying, Jim, that, uh, if we don't do it, that whatever, uh, price we have maintained at this time, it'll probably increase if we do not sign it or what?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not saying it probably would, but I'm just saying that over the course of, but let's say, let's say we delay this. Uh, I'm just saying, there's always the potential that one of the other parties decide, well, we need to change this thing. A lot of effort. And again, Ray and Dale, I think, have done a fantastic job of integrating and coordinating these two contracts. And if, if we, if we say, well, we're delaying this, we're not ready to execute, yeah, a lot of things, to your point earlier, there's a lot of things changing out here. And, and, and there's no way to know whether or not this would be available to, to execute sometime in the future. I'm just saying it costs us nothing now to execute. Potential, it's a lot of wasted time and effort if we don't execute it.
So what you're saying, Jim, that, uh, even a month from now, you think that things might change? Because I think what Kevin asked was for maybe another month to put it off.
I, I just, yeah, no, I, I, I wouldn't think, honestly, I wouldn't think anything would change in a month. On the other hand, I don't know what additional visibility we're going to have, what information we're going to have that would change our mind. I, I mean, again, this, a lot of effort went into giving this flexibility to the district and to the county to move forward in small increments as money was made available. And so I don't know how it's going to get any better than it is right now. And I don't, I, I can't imagine any information that, that's possible. Uh, i- i- if something disastrous came up, we could always terminate all of this. We've got termination rights under this. I just don't see the downside of going ahead and moving forward with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, my thought, you know, like I said, I, I'm the one that made the motion to bring it out of the committee. And of course, I hate, I forgot about all the rules of order as I made my motion, but it brought on the discussion that I wanted to have. Uh, but my, my thing is, I mean, do we actually think that, that the construction company and the, and the architects are going to want to change their mind about being a part of this? If we just wait till we know a little bit more about what is going on? I mean, that's just, I, to me, you, you, you don't, you don't sign contracts to build something until you have the funding to do it. Is, is just my thought. And, and I was fine with, with going ahead and doing this. Like I said, up until, you know, Karen Bell talked about what she talked about Monday night. And, and, and I know she, you know, she don't have a vote on the county commission. But to me, it, it, she really made it sound like, you know, that they weren't going to fund anything till twenty twenty-two. And I, my whole point is I don't understand why we'd enter a contract where, where two months away, less than two months away from, uh, a new superintendent coming in. And, and although I believe he feels that he will want to build Pope and the new K eight and, and, and everything, but I, I, you know, if we, if we enter this contract now, you know, he doesn't get any say in it. He doesn't get, because he's the one that's actually going to have to deal with it. And that's my other point. But the main thing is the fact that, you know, the county commission, from what Karen Bell said, has made clear that they are not planning on funding any new capital projects until twenty twenty-two. And I just don't see if we wait till July or e, or even next month. If we wait and just see more about it and, and let, and Dr. King come in as a consultant and him be more on, know more about it, um, than he does now and have, and have a right to consult concerning it since he's going to have to deal with it. I, I, I don't see how we lose. I don't see how, that the construction company or, uh, the architect would want to back out just over a month or, or two months.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, what I'm, a- a- again, I'm not suggesting in one month, any of these people would back out. But what I'm hearing Mr. Alexander say is, he, he really is not talking about delaying it a month. He's, he's talking about delaying it until we have funding or delaying it until Dr. King gets on board. But Dr. King in July is not going to be ready to make a decision on this. So what I'm hearing is we just want to. So what I'm hearing is, we just wanna indefinitely delay it. And that's my concern. If we, if, yeah, in one month, I really don't think anybody's gonna back out. But what I'm hearing is, we just wanna delay it indefinitely. Do we either have funding or, or something's gonna happen? So that's my concern, and I would just urge us to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Jim.
That is not my, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to delay it indefinitely or until we get funding. Because I, I know the whole point of doing this is so that when we have some money for capital that we can spend to do some of this stuff, that we can do it. So when the county commission is ready to fund this, that it, that it will be funded, that it'll be ready to start. I understand that completely. My whole point is, is, is with all the stuff that's going on, I just think it's wiser to wait and see how some stuff pulls out. When, when, when the time come, you know, I'm gonna be voting for this. But I just think with everything that's going on right now, and, and I just feel like we should wait.
Any other comments?
Hey, I'm calling for the vote. To approve the resolution for the construction management contract. Kevin?
No.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
No.
Janice?
I abstain.
AJ?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
I vote no. What's your tally?
Four, yes, one is staying.
The vote is four, four and one extension. So the motion failed. And next on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, is the intent here, what's the intent now? Are we gonna vote on it again in June? I mean, what, what is our intent here?
Well, I want, Jim, can you hear me? What I, uh, I'd like to do, I thought, you know, we started and I jumped ahead of myself with the, knowing that we are, the budget committee had already brought this to the, to our board. To go back to Kevin's original motion at this time.
I, I make, the motion, I just, I make the motion, we revisit this in June, at the June, at the June board meeting.
Okay.
Kevin?
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Is that Carol?
Second.
Second.
Doris.
Doris, okay. Okay, we got a motion in the second. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne? Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
AJ?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna clear what we're voting on at this point, I'm sorry.
I'll repeat it, what we're voting on is to revisit the resolution of the construction management contract in our June board meeting.
So not voting on it tonight?
Right. Now, what the vote motion is, is to revisit it in our June board meeting.
I'm confused. Kevin's motion was failed, and that was postponed, so Shannon, can you help me out here? What, what's the?
No, 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 the motion from the, the budget committee failed.
Oh, okay. I was confused on that. So we're gonna revisit it again in June then?
Yes, sir, that's, that's the motion now.
Sure.
Okay, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, motion, Carol. So next on the agenda, Dr. King's contract. Everyone has a a copy, we discussed it in our work session, any discussions or comments concerning the contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to just, for public record purposes, just hit some highlights of his contract. Because I was, after our work session on Monday night, I did receive a few phone calls and emails from constituents, people that just were curious. Because we, we all read, the nine of us read the contract. Obviously, Dr. King read the contract, his attorney read the contract, our attorney, Mr. Thomas, read the contract. But we didn't discuss it, we just talked about how we had all seen it. So I just wanted to hit some high points, just for public record purposes. If that, is that, do I have the ability to do that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, it is a four-year contract ending June, starting July 1, 2020. And he will, he is into, end this contract until June 30th, 2024 with a compensation of a base salary of $185,000 a year. And those were the two main questions that I was asked. Some other things, which I think actually, I also read about in the newspaper this week. He had a clause in there about allowing his son to attend any middle school in our district without having to go through the application and lottery process. There are other things in there about his, I'm sorry. Other things in there about how we'll, you know, cover expenses and other duties that he can do on the side. You know, he, he, he works for us, however, he can speak and write and lecture. And that's really it, just for public record purposes, I wanted to say those things out loud. We all read the contract and we all reviewed it. And obviously, it's been vetted by our school board attorney and Mr. King's attorney. And they came, you know, they negotiated this contract. But I just wanted to say those things out loud for public record purposes because I did receive a few questions about that.
And Shannon, if they have more questions, I think Ms. Sherica did a very good job of describing what was actually in the contract. So they can now go to the newspaper and look at that article because it explained it very well.
Yes, and the questions came actually within 30 minutes of us adjourning our meeting on Monday night. Just because we didn't talk about it. And, and I didn't, I didn't really realize that was a thing. Evidently, that, again, we all have to work within the history of this school system. And evidently, there's been some history of questions about things that have been in superintendent contracts and that they weren't fully vetted and discussed by the board. But, you know, we all read the contract, you know, our attorney read the contract, so. But just for public record purposes, I did want to make that statement tonight.
And let me say that, the reason I didn't cover any details of the contract is I asked for questions from the board and there was and was not any. So I just assumed that everything was clear. But of course, we know that the contract will be public record. And if there's any other items that need clarity, I'm sure I either can do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say that it's not unusual that superintendents have a job outside of what their main job is within this district. A lot of them do lecture. They do have times where they do presentations and other things which they have, you know, giftedness of that should no way or the other have an impact to what their job responsibilities are within our school district. You know, I, I feel like they know that it should not overlap in what is more responsible, you know, which is the first call of their responsibilities as a superintendent, and anything else shall remain second. And so I just wanted to make that as a public notice as well. That it's not anything new that we have not done or have not allowed other superintendents to do outside of their main job as superintendent with this district.
Okay, let me make a comment concerning the, I think Shannon, that there was a concern about the open enrollment concerning Dr. King's son, which will be in middle school this year, one of, this upcoming year. One of the things that we took in consideration is the fact that he's coming after open enrollment has already closed, when you get an opportunity to have his, his son in one of the schools that they selected. And the other thing is, if he moved in a temporary location and then moved later to a permanent location, his son could easily be in three different schools in one school year. So we took that into consideration. So if there's any questions about that, go ahead and ask those because I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that because he doesn't have a residence set up here in Jackson at this time, then, you know, right now, it's feasible to say that he could attend, his son can attend any other schools. Just like you said, until there is some type of residence, whether it be temporary or permanent, you know, then we have to look at that during that time. But since there is no residence set up here, and since he is acting as a consultant at this time, we did wise by saying that, you know, at this point in time, he could allow his son to attend any district, any school in this district.
But Dale, did you want to clear up anything else concerning that information?
Yeah, I did. One, a couple of things, if you look at this contract, 90% of the contract language, including the language about speaking engagements and so forth, are taken from contracts that this school system has used for probably 15 years. And it's also taken from, Tennessee School Board Association has model contracts. And that, that language is taken from model contracts to the TSBA that school districts all across the state use. The, the other thing, I was just gonna point out a few things about, you know, I read the article in the Sun about automobile allowance, moving expenses. Again, all those are provisions that we've done with prior superintendents who were moving from a county outside of the district to here. The automobile allowance is, is the exact same automobile allowance that we've had with a few prior superintendents. The, almost all of the benefits are exact from prior superintendents. The salary, we, Mr. Johnson and I looked at comparable districts in the state and also looked at what the prior, what Dr. Jones was making when he started. And that salary is very much in line with other superintendents of districts of similar size in the state of Tennessee. So I just wanted to make, point those things out because I read the article as well and, and I thought maybe there were some questions about what went into the process and, and what considerations were made. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows those, those things were considered and looked at and vetted.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, AJ?
I reached out to some of our Tennessee School Board Association reps and asking about that. Because I got questioned about the, the vehicle allowance quite a bit as well. And just, just, and this is all public record, but Maryville, basically every system has, it's very common. Some basic system info, contract signed in 2016, Maryville has a car allowance of $400. That was signed in 2016, signed in 2018 was Dyer County at 700. Greenville was signed in 2020 and it's $950 a month, or, yeah, it's $950 a month. So 950, 700 and 400 going back to 2016, so we're right in line with that. And so just, once again, kind of as a note of public record, it's, it's fair, it's common, and it makes sense.
Thanks AJ. Let me make another comment concerning the salary, and I think that Dale mentioned that. What I did, AJ, I reached out to TSBA and I got a copy of the salaries of every superintendent in the school system, I mean, the state. And actually, we had, there's one school system, Murray County, has the exact number of schools we have. And that superintendent, I think, was making 5,000 more than our current, our base salary was, he was making 180. The other thing we took into consideration, the fact that Dr. King has eight years of superintendent experience. And I don't remember us hiring a previous superintendent that had that experience. So I thought that should be some of the negotiating things that we, we needed to consider. Okay? Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kevin?
I make the motion, we accept the contract, Dr. King.
I second, and I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
I guess.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol? Carol? We can, we can hear in here, as I think she muted the system. Janice?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. Thank you all. Let me also add that, another part of the negotiation process, Dale and Superintendent Washington is working on, has worked on a consulting contract with Dr. King. And his consulting contract would begin on May 18th. Okay, next under an item that we had removed from constant agenda, budget amendment number five. Kevin, I think you had that move.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I knew it changed, we got that information right before the meeting started. And I just wanted clarification on all of that.
Yeah, so yesterday during the financial management committee meeting, as you know, Monday night, we approved this budget amendment. And during the financial management committee meeting, we were discussing, of course, the need for funds for the upcoming JCM and Madison projects. And would it be possible to move some of these funds to make sure we secure those items, which we talked about, that it would be necessary to open those schools up by August? So what we did was remove the lockers, which we've been pending for about four or five years and we're trying to work them in, but they were the only significant items that we could. we could move that would make a difference. So we're asking to remove the lockers at Bemis and JCT, and we're going to move that money into next year to help with the Madison and JCM furnishings, cameras, and other technology. The total amount is 4.8 million dollars, and this, this 2.1 million, give or take, would just be as a part of, we would contribute along with the other capital from the county. So these funds are part of the capital that the county gave us for this year, I just want to move part of it to next year, to help with those projects.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask Ray a question?
Yes, sure.
Ray, what, so what, so what are we going to look at doing for these locker rooms at West Bemis and, and JCT? Are we?
Well, yeah, yeah. Exactly, we've been putting them off for four years before we even started here. I think this was a part of Vision 2020 that was never funded, and we were trying to work to get it funded, but like you said, there are things that have come up over the past several weeks that has caused us to make adjustments, it would make no sense to build those schools and not be able to furnish them and get what we need in them, and since we have been waiting four years, we might be able to get these in 2022 now, versus this year, we can move, excuse me, in 2021 to 2022, and given the activities around sports and all those type of things that are pending and may not occur this year, I thought it was just a prudent thing to do to try to take a wise look at how we're going to use our capital dollars, and what's the best use of them.
Superintendent Washington, again, explain to me, I, I guess I missed something. What are we doing and why are we doing it?
Yes, ma'am. So we have the budget amendment that we talked about Monday, and at the top of that budget amendment was the lockers for West Bemis and JCT. These lockers need to be added to these schools because they're middle schools and have athletics and things of that nature. This goes back to, I believe, Vision 2020, when they were converted from elementary schools to middle schools, these lockers or the funds for these locker rooms were never appropriated. I'm saying, given where we are and what we're trying to do with JCM and Madison, I need to move that money forward to help take care of the furnishings and fixtures and things that we need for Madison and JCM versus spending on the lockers. I think that money would be much better spent there this year than on lockers that we've been waiting on for four or five years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, let me mention, I was somewhat disappointed because Bemis and JCT, we had talked about those lockers for, ever since I've been on the board, even before then, but one of the things that, after discussion, the decision with Superintendent Washington, one of the things that actually is positive is the additional classroom that Community Montessori, actually, is, that school has a waiting list, okay? We just lost, what, 118 students last year? So when you take that into consideration, and it may not be all new students, but it may be some, I think that makes a lot of sense, in my, my opinion.
Yeah, as, as a part of this budget amendment, there's several schools that will be touched, Northeast, North South Side, North Side Gym, there's a lot of schools touching this amendment other than those two things, so there's a lot of items in this budget amendment, Lincoln, as far as parking lot and tile work we're doing there, there's a lot of things in this budget amendment, but none of them add up to what those lockers are, so even if we didn't do those others, we'd still be right around a million bucks, where these would give us 2 million towards those other projects that are needed. So it's not a matter of this school or that school, it's just a matter of us making sure we take care of these new projects and get them funded right, so we can get into those, and come back to the JCM and West Bemis, and I know it's been put off for a long time, we're excited to consider doing it this summer, but at the same time, what is the best use of our funds in the upcoming year? And, and I just think the best use of our funds is to make sure we take care of JCM and Madison as they're being built as we speak, and continue to work with JCM and West Bemis to get the lockers. Locker rooms, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and speaking of the Community Montessori, I'd like to get a copy of the waiting list, because I want to look at the demographics, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and so the purpose also, just so you know, when we got involved with the city, part of that situation is that Montessori will be added a zone, where each year, we could have 25% of the incoming students, and so we're going to draw that zone to make sure it's very inclusive of, of, of the communities around it, not just on one side of Highland, but on both sides of Highland. Of course, over the years, people have criticized Montessori for the demographic makeup, and this will give us an opportunity to work with that demographic makeup a little bit better by giving preference to that 25% that we do zone, so we're considering that also.
I think in advance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks, I'm, I'm, I hope we pull that for discussion, so everyone has clarity and has transparency. Any other questions, additional comments concerning that budget amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second? Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
Uh, Doris, did you second that?
Wayne?
Wayne?
Wayne, Wayne makes sense. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have any committee reports?
Not at this time, I'd like to mention, though, that the Long Range Planning Committee have not met due to the situation that we're in, but I will be contacting the other members next week, and hopefully, we can start back up in July.
And Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make notice that the Policy Committee meeting will, well, we've talked, I've talked to Janet and to Superintendent Washington, and we will tentatively schedule a Policy Committee meeting in mid-May. Also, I had talked with Superintendent Washington and Janet concerning legislative meet, and hopefully, we can have a meeting scheduled sometime in June.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hampton. Next, Superintendent report?
Yes, I did. I'm muted, you got me?
I am, yeah.
Okay, I did attend the budget hearings today, we reviewed basically what Holly said, we talked about where we are this year, and what the responsibilities are, and looking at the responsibilities going forward. Internally, we're conducting budget meetings with the staff here to review every school, every department, in every which way we can, look at making, making decisions without impacting the outcomes of education for our students. So we're really taking a hard look at everything, and I don't know if we'll make it to a meeting, to be honest with you, with all we're trying to do, but we have certain responsibilities and obligations that we have to adhere to as a school district. So with that being said, we also continue to provide meals, we'll be over the 100,000, 100,000 meal mark within the next few days, and we'll be going through March 21st, on that day, we'll provide two days of meals, because that's a Thursday, and RIFA is starting on Friday to drop off the snack backpacks that they typically do at the schools on Friday, so each kid will get a meal on Friday and a snack backpack for the weekend as a result of RIFA. We also celebrated Nurses' Day this week, along with it being Teacher Appreciation Week, so try to give a shout out to all the nurses that do an amazing job at the front line of healthcare for many of our students who don't have access to healthcare, and we want to make sure we show appreciation for them, along with it being Teacher Appreciation Week, and what better time to talk about teacher appreciation during the time of this pandemic, when so many people are going above and beyond expectations to reach our students. So just hats off to everyone involved, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Hampton?
Yes, with all the teachers that are listening, our principals on the line, live stream tonight, I just want to send a shout out to all the teachers in Jackson-Madison County school system for a job well done for such a time as this, since we're having this pandemic, you know, and how they are actually working in order to keep the students involved in continuing the educational process.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Next on the agenda, if you have any legislative contact reports, get those to Secretary Janet, FYI, tomorrow at 9 o'clock, we will have Dr. King's contract signing, if you're able to swing by, we'll be, again, we have a limited number of guests, so we'll have a walkthrough, so if you can, would like to stop by, please do. Any other business one I'd like to bring before the, before we ask for motion to adjourn? Thank you, Janet. Very important, everyone, remember tomorrow, the 8th is the deadline to get Superintendent's evaluation to Janet. If you don't have a copy, she can get you, email you another copy, reach out to her if you don't. And again, let me also mention that next month's meeting will also be virtual, based on the update from the governor extending Executive Order Number 16 through June 30. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you all.